So we'll start with thanking Mr. Miles for joining us today. Mr. Superintendent, thank you for agreeing to meet with the council members today. As you know, we've had several residents that have approached this body with concerns, and namely, they kind of feel unheard because they don't have an elected board. So they've come to council meetings and asked us to host a meeting and to kind of just talk about what's happening at HISD and to kind of be a voice for them. And that's what we've all committed to do as elected officials. And so today is our opportunity for you to present to us and for the council members to engage with you as the leadership of HISD as we discuss the vital role that our school system plays in the economic growth and development of our city. Quite frankly, we talk about it all the time, that the largest portion of our tax bill is HISD for so many of us in the city of Houston. So we are all vested in our school system, and a thriving school system is critical for cities. Today, we are looking forward to your presentation and the opportunity to ask questions, discuss best possible outcomes for our students, their parents, and our broader community. We know that our time is limited, so we'll get right to the presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions from the council members. So Superintendent Miles, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and council members. Thanks for inviting me and giving me an opportunity to talk a little bit about what we're doing in HISD. I'm excited and proud to be the superintendent of HISD, and I'm here to give a report and also answer some questions. So I'll get with the report, try to keep it around 15 minutes so that there's time to talk about the things you want to talk about, not just what I want to talk about. So I got to take you back a little bit to Destination 2035 when I got here. Next slide. I said last year that this is the last generation of kids in school before the skills gap is locked in. To put that in some context, our district, HISD, has a number of great schools, a lot of schools that are nationally ranked, and you've seen the U.S. News &amp; World Report and other accolades that come to our schools, and we have a number of them that can compete with any district anywhere. So it might be a little confusing, a year ago, when the state decided to intervene in HISD. The truth be told, though, there's a number of schools, while we have this group of A and B schools, we have a number of schools that are not serving kids well. Of this number, there's 123 DNF campuses, usually in the underserved areas. And so we have a tale of two districts. We have a large achievement gap between this group and this group, and we know that over many, many years, this state of affairs has kind of ingrained itself in the fabric of the district. Besides the achievement gap, we also have a skills gap, and hence the reason for the slide and the words, "The Last Generation of Students Before the Skills Gap Is Locked In." Next slide. So then the question became last summer, what to do? We know that you can't keep doing the same things and get a different outcome. That actually has been what all urban superintendents know, but few have been able to overcome. This notion of piecemeal incremental reform in our profession has not worked. And so the achievement gap has not closed. In any large urban district over the last 20 years, HISD has been no different. We've not closed the achievement gap. An equity gap, the equity gap has still reigned large in HISD as well. So the method, the strategy that we have for turning around this large urban district has been whole-scale systemic reform, which means large-scale, comprehensive changes, all at one time for one section of the district. That has never been tried at this scale in any urban district in the country. So it made sense, it makes sense that there'd be some anxiety, some trepidation around that strategy. And you heard it, even the first summer, even the first day before those Board of Managers and I took our seats, you heard this trepidation really loud and clear. And that was understandable. Next slide. So the vision is 150 whole-scale systemic reform schools by the year 2036, and not 274, that's how many schools we have. This has always been a reform, whole-scale reform for a subset of schools, not the entire district. That doesn't mean we're not going to do other things to try to improve the entire district because that's the charge. But that vision is clear, and that's what we've acted upon. Next slide. Still, even with the good strategy, even with comprehensive reform, even with a detailed plan, the question then became, how do you implement that plan in a district that had 274 autonomous schools with no vision, moving in different directions, with a financial situation that put us at a fiscal cliff by the end of this last school year, the beginning of this one, with a lot of inefficient systems? And I know you all are going to do an efficiency report down the road. But in inefficient systems, no set plan for what the quality of instruction is or what it looks like. And the task then is to take this monolithic system, decentralized system, and get outcomes for our kids in a short amount of time. That was the charge, that's the task. And so, next slide. We started to do this. And the main strategy for it is something called NES, New Education System Schools. You've all have heard about it, 85 of the 274 schools. We started with 28. 57 schools then volunteered, and so now we're at 85. Next year, we'll be at 130, and half of the additional schools are volunteers. In any case, what is NES? I don't have a lot of time to get into all the details, but you see it on the slide in front of you. Whole-scale systemic transformation, that means doing a lot of changes all at once. It means 85 schools, 130 next year. It has a unique instructional model, which combines direct instruction with differentiated instruction. Basically, kids who need more time, get that time. Kids who are ahead, get challenged. It has a different sort of compensation system. If you could put the slide back up just so I can walk through that. Next, there you go. Back.
Go back.
There you go, thank you. Different compensation model. We have teacher apprentices and learning coaches, so the staffing model is different and more supportive, more supports for the schools in the NES. Higher teacher salaries by far, the average salary next year is going to be $84,000 in the NES orbit. That's 130 schools, that's 5,160 teachers. Grade-level differentiated curriculum, that is huge because a lot of kids who are behind in other districts don't get grade-level instruction. On-the-job coaching, you may have heard some, how we do it in the NES orbit, which is we provide feedback real-time on the job that had to be trained and coached. Rigorous evaluation systems for both teachers and principals, eliminating non-instructional tasks, we can talk about that if you want. A dyad program that adds to electives, not takes away from, does not replace. On top of elective, our students in the NES orbit get things like martial arts, photography, dance, graphic design, and more. And then student travel. Our students who meet eligibility requirements, so you have to have attendance, you have to have a 92% attendance rate, and that knocks out a lot of kids. In 8th grade, if you meet that requirement, and if your parents allow you to go, we had kids going to Japan. They went to Japan this year, free of charge, it was our costs and some philanthropic dollars. Going to Japan, getting a passport, all of that was paid for, was quite an experience for our students. If you're 7th grade and you meet eligibility requirements, you went to Washington, D.C., and they just returned from Washington, D.C., our 7th graders who met the eligibility requirement. Next slide. So in a nutshell, that's, I know that's fast, but I want to get to your questions, and we can dive more into it if you want. What happened this year, then? What was the result? Did the big bets pay off? Did what we planned, how did it pan out? This slide, please. The one before that. The headline is this, "Our Students and Teachers Rose to the Level of Expectation." They did great. The students did great. And for a moment, regardless of everything else, we should celebrate what the kids did. Let me show you, with just a little bit of data, how they did. Next slide. And slide next, please. So I don't want to give a lot of spreadsheets, it's in the afternoon late, and I don't want to put anybody asleep. So I'll just show you a couple data sheets here. The one that you see on the screen is 3rd through 8th grade results of the STAR. That third column there, fourth column, is the one, the state grades, meaning, did they improve from last year? Did the proficiency of students improve from last year? And you can see that, as a state, we did not do that well. And the commissioner has said as much. We did not do that well as a state. HISD, on the other hand, did great. You can see those scores right there on the second to last column. The last column is if you compare our increase with the state's increase. So did we, did our kids grow more than the state? How many percentage points more? On the right-hand side, you see 3 percentage more for 3rd grade, 6 for 4th grade, et cetera. That, by the way, is the best in the state of any large urban district in the state of Texas. Those scores are right there. And we can, you can go online and get all the details, and we can give you our website, and you can get all the details there. Next slide. This is the last data slide. I just want to show you the magnitude of the results that our kids performed. You see the, our scores, HISD scores over there on the left in the colored column. How did we do compared to Texas? So the non-NES schools did well compared to the state of Texas. You see those pluses? Those are above the state's growth. The NES schools, 85 schools, so that's a lot of kids, that's a third of our kids, outperformed the non-NES. The NES did great, so that's good. HISD did great, that's good. NES did twice as well. Those are facts, these are data from the state. Twice as well. And I say, and no one has said I'm wrong, and I challenge anybody to see, the reading growth that you see for NES and the math growth in NES, overall, reading and math, is the best of any urban district, one-year increase of the Texas exam ever, even after just one year. Next slide. So that's the numbers. But the real story is not about the numbers. Behind the numbers are kids and teachers and principals. Behind every number you see there are kids working hard, their teachers working hard, helping the kids, believing that they can, otherwise we would not have gotten there, and principals guiding those teachers. Next slide, please. Let me just give you one example. We have dozens of stories like this. This is Wainwright Elementary School. Next slide. Wainwright Elementary School was an F school this last year, F, F-rated. And they, their school, their NES, the kids don't know about NES, non-NES, and the teachers, you know, care about what's happening in the school and what's happening in the classroom. Just take a look at the scores here. I'll just mention a couple things. 17 percentage points reading last year, a year ago. 17% of the 3rd graders were reading at grade level or above. That is, that's not good, to say the least. This year, 46%. The teachers were crying for joy, the principal so proud of her kids. The kids were holding up their NWA scores, which is not the STAR, but the NWA, later you'll see, is further proof of how well that school is doing. Anyway, the STAR scores show great growth, the teachers know it, the parents know it, the principal knows it, they're happy about this. These numbers have real kids behind them, they're celebrating, we should celebrate. Because it's not just Wainwright, it's dozens and dozens of schools that did this. And so for a moment in time, I hope, at least, we can celebrate what our kids did and what they demonstrated. But more than that, forget all the STAR scores, forget all the NE scores, NWA scores, more kids can read today than they could a year ago. Higher percentage of kids can read at grade level. Higher percentage of kids can do math. That's what we want. That is the outcome of this intervention, so that we can move out of intervention. Because that is the goal, that's the outcome. Now, talked a lot about the kids. We know that the kids can only do this with great teachers. And so I'm proud of the fact that the overwhelming majority of teachers stepped up. Next slide. The overwhelming majority of our teachers stepped up, and we're talking about teachers in all the schools, but mostly, or not mostly, but significantly in our community schools, the schools that we're struggling. Our goal is to keep, is to keep our community schools. There is no goal here to close any school, I've said that publicly. I've made good on that this year, we're making good on it next year. I can't promise down the road what we'll do, it depends. But our first task is to make sure the schools that we have, even our small schools, have a chance to improve and compete with the charter schools that are taking kids from them. That's the, that's the goal. We also have no goal to increase the number of charter schools, we haven't done and won't do during this time of intervention. Our task is pretty clear. There's 274 schools. Let's make our C, D, and F schools stronger, and let's keep our A and B schools strong. That's the task. That's how we get the outcomes we need, and that's how we get out of intervention. Next slide. And teachers and the quality of instruction is the leading indicator. We won't do that without them, without effective teachers raising the quality of instruction. And so I've been in the schools, I've seen a lot of teachers, I've coached a lot of principals. I can see every day our workforce getting stronger, but also teachers stepping up and really engaging the instruction, really engaging and doing what's needed for the kids, embracing reforms. That's what's really happening in our schools. And so we need to take care of the teachers. We need to do a couple things that districts talk about but rarely do. Number one, let's give teachers a living wage, a professional living wage, not just a living wage, a professional wage. So we started with half the district next year, 130 schools is half the district, 5,160 teachers. In the, in the non-NES world, it's going to be 5,600, so it's about half. Half the teachers are going to get 84,400 on average, so there's some higher, some lower. That's the average, that's what it should be. Actually, it should be closer to 90,000. Now, in the, in the non-NES world, next slide, we also increased our salaries to 70,600 next year, half the teachers. That's higher average than anyone in the area. That's not enough. This salary is not enough. We had a tough, tough budget year, we're going to talk about that in a second. Tough finances, it's the best we could do this year, but we're going to raise those salaries too. Next slide. So the combined average next year, and I've been asking the Chronicle to report this broadly, and I've got some commitment that they will, the average salary from a year ago was 68,250. Next year, it's going to be 77,000, all combined, right? All combined, that's the, that's the average for teacher in Houston ISD. No, nobody else comes close to average salary, nobody comes close. That's a huge increase in just one year's time. Not enough, we'll do more. The other thing that we've done is we're trying to get the work-life balance right. So in the NES world, you heard about the curriculum. That curriculum is provided for teachers, they don't have to look for resources after work, they don't have to make lesson plans, they don't have to make copies. So when a teacher leaves, eventually, this is the way it's supposed to be. And it's not perfect yet, because teachers are still working hard. But when they leave at 4:15 or whenever they leave for the end of the day, they should be able to leave, leave, meaning leave their work at school and have a better work-life balance, work-life harmony, leave at 4:15 and be done, because the things are given for them, and they still have a planning period. Next slide. And I'm about to close here, so we can take some questions. This may not seem important, but it's the second most important thing we did this year, and that is zero-based budgeting. Next slide. That graph you just saw, that blue line, was a graph that was given to me in May of last year, over a year ago. And it predicts a fiscal cliff if we did nothing, meaning, we should be at $548 million fund balance right now in the budget that we gave, and then 252 million the next year. You guys are, just went through a budgeting process, you know how difficult this is. We had to find $520 million to at least fill a gap, $520 million in order to stay at the 800, that orange line, to flatten it out. That is the most difficult thing we've had to do as a district, and I suspect any district has had to do in the state of Texas in one year. Those were the cards we were dealt, and this is how we fixed it, and it came at a lot of pain and a huge cost. But that's going to help the district long-term if we're going to continue to get the gains we need. Next slide, I think it's the last slide. That says it all. Our kids are thriving, they made gains, and we're going to continue to do that next year. Next slide. I'll be the first to say and have said, we have a long way to go. This is just one year. But our goal is the outcomes we need to return the district to an elected board, that's the charge. I'm invested in Houston, but you know, in the end of the day, I'm trying to work myself out of a job. We want to return the district to an elected board. One of the biggest buckets, there's three buckets, the biggest bucket is to have no schools with D or F rating, no school with multiple years of D or F rating. That's the charge, we have 123 of them. We've got to do different things to get our kids out of intervention. Last slide. A year ago, many people, even people in the district and people who study education would have said, this is impossible. To take 274 schools that went all over the place, that had no vision, that had no cohesive knowledge or vision of what instruction looked like, that had no plan to get out of DNF status, doing their own thing, against the odds, that it would be impossible to get achievement gains, narrow the achievement gap. And it's not impossible. Even if it were, it'd be necessary. Who has the first question?
Thank you, Superintendent Miles, we appreciate your presentation. We do have some council members in the queue. We'll start off this afternoon with Councilmember Pollak.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And Superintendent, thank you for being here and accepting our offer for dialogue. I want to thank all of the community members who are here as well. You said that behind the numbers are teachers, behind the numbers are students. I would also add that behind the numbers are families. And there are families all over the city who have reached out to our offices concerned, worried, want insight, clarity into the direction of the district. I'm an HISD kid, I went to all HISD schools, I have a son in HISD. You mentioned in your presentation that the students did great, the schools did great, that you overcame the odds. But then we also had mass layoffs. So the same teachers, the same principals that got you these results are now being laid off. Some of them are from A and B schools, right? So there hasn't been a lot of insight into what we can tell our constituents on why that is, and how can we talk to our constituents, many of the moms and dads who send their kids to a school, to where now they don't have the confidence or the, or not comfortable with the environment that they will be in. Do you have, or can you provide insights to us on how you came to those determinations on these mass layoffs? And if the, if the school district is going in the right direction, why make such drastic changes when you're, when you're supposed to be doing well?
Yes, so thanks for, thanks for the question. Every decision this spring for removing or cutting back on staff has been a tough one. There's a couple months at central office where the supervisors had to talk to close to 1,500 employees, 1,500. So yeah, that's a lot of staff that's been laid off. And I wish it weren't so. I wish we hadn't used extra monies for recurring expenses. I wish there hadn't been this enormous increase in the number of central office positions over the last five and six years, at the same time that the district lost 30,000 kids in six years. Increase in central office position, decrease in enrollment, huge gap.
So are you saying that the reason why some of the teachers, which in my district, I had a principal of the year that was laid off, there's teachers of the year, librarians of the year, that we're going to sacrifice their positions because of budgetary concerns? Because don't we have to replace those positions?
Yeah, so you mentioned mass layoffs, I'm trying to address that question. So part of that is central office, that's the group that actually got laid off, most of them, or a significant number, 1,500. But to address your principal or teacher question, so one of the things that every district struggles with is evaluation. What does it mean to be an effective teacher? What does it mean to be an effective principal? And we can have debates about that, but there has to be an answer to it if you want to move forward and you want to turn this district around. Not answering that question will get you more of the same. The last 20 years, the last 20 years, we've not had a rigorous evaluation system for teachers and principals, and hence you have the same achievement gap and the same problems as, as we've had before. So we answered the question, and so let me just take principals, for example. I can't tell you in the past what they use for, you know, effective principles, what, what made principal of the year. That's a different criteria. But I can tell you that in order to assess principals rigorously, you have to look at several things, and you have to look at the data around several things besides being subjective. So what sort of data? Achievement data, of course, progress, growth, of course, not just whether they're, and you know, they get a star score of X. So that's one piece. Another piece is the quality of instruction. The quality of instruction is the leading indicator for achievement. Go to any other large urban district, and that is usually they're failing, meaning they don't assess it, they don't insist on high-quality they don't assess it, they don't insist on high-quality instruction, they don't coach it, and we did all that. The third piece is leadership. Leadership is key, because how the principal leads, that's how the teachers feel, that's how the climate goes, and that's how the culture goes. And then the third, the last piece of that is usually climate surveys, but this year we replaced it with special education, growth, and compliance, because that's the second bucket of the intervention. We have to be in compliance, and we have to grow our special needs services. Then there's a fifth bucket that has to do with personnel actions and decisions that are outside of that evaluation for professionalism or behavior, things like that. So that's why we had an evaluation system, and that's why we have principals, some of whom are not returning.
And just my last comment is, as you're doing these evaluations, and that's why I always come back to, behind the numbers are the families. The families know what type of instruction, for the most part, their kids are getting. They are dropping their kids off every single day to a school, and they have to feel comfortable with the education that their child is receiving. So in the evaluation, you can test and see what the temperature is based on the reaction of the families. If the families of the school are upset with the decisions that are being made, then the evaluation may have to be tailored. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for being here, Mr. Miles, and accepting our invitation to come and address us. First of all, congratulations to the students and teachers and folks at HIS D on the improved test scores. Just a few questions. When do you foresee that your job will be completed and we can return HIS D to an elected board?
Yes, sir. So there are three big criteria for exit. One is no schools with multiple years of D or F status. Second bucket is compliance for special education, we have to get out of bed, jail, and then we also have to improve special needs student services. That's the second bucket. And the third bucket has to do with governance, a more effective governance system. So to answer your question, we have a long way to go, but if we continue to see the growth that we had this year, let's say we do that two more years in a row. And by the way, the answer to your question really is the commissioners, you know, the commissioner needs the answer, I just have a guess, because I'm not in charge of that transition. But my sense is, if we had three years of good growth, the commissioner will probably start to transition to an elected board. How that looks, I think that will be, of course, be up to the commissioner, but I suspect that some members of the elected board will replace some members of the board of manager.
So best-case scenario, if we see performance like we've seen this year for the next two years, then we'll start to transition to an elected board? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So there's been attention devoted to the loss of wraparound specialists, and we were told that was due to the loss of federal funding. Do you have a plan to address that loss going forward?
Yes, sir. We have done our benefit-cost analysis on the one hand, and on the second hand, we've been looking at a continuum of care, and can we still provide that continuum of care without the wraparound specialists? And the answer is yes, we will keep 48 wraparound specialists, but we will put them at the, what we call the unit level, that's pushed closer to the field, where a wraparound specialist will now have four or five schools versus the one school, wraparound specialist in every school. But more than that, we will have telehealth, we only had 88 schools taking advantage of telehealth, now 274 schools will be able to take advantage of telehealth. So telemedicine, that provides more immediate assistance for kids who need that health care. We still have the sunrise centers, and we still have people at the schools who can refer, which is what the wraparound specialists mostly did, refer kids to other services, like a nurse, like a counselor, like a sunrise center, or provide food, the food bank, so now an office manager or assistant principal will provide, go into the food bank and help the student, or clothes. So now an office manager or assistant principal will go into the bank of clothes and provide clothes. So we believe that we will still be able to provide the continuum of care. Keep in mind, we still have counselors, psychologists, social workers, nurses, we still have a lot of supports for our kids.
Okay, last question if I may. Communication has been a big issue, and your last budget vote was razor-thin margin, you know, and that's your board of managers. Do you have a plan to improve communication going forward?
Yes, is the short answer. The longer answer is that is certainly an area that needs improvement. It's certainly an area that we can do better at, especially when you think about the different sorts of communities that we have. One thing, for example, was the defined autonomy, meaning I've said before, probably the best decision I made was to add 57 schools to the NES orbit instead of just the 28. That came with the worst decision probably I made, which was, didn't explain clearly enough the impact of NES and the things we were doing on our A and B campuses. And so belatedly, we put out the defined autonomy document that is now on the website, and we've been talking to the principals and community about, and that will help with some of the communications or miscommunications that happen during the year. But that's just one thing, there are many other things we can do. So, short answer, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
We'll move to Councilmember Alcorn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, sir, for coming. On the scores, does everybody take the STAR test? Are all students required to take the STAR test?
Yes, ma'am, we had 98% attendance.
Okay, and there's no high school, how does that work? When do we get results about high schools?
Yeah, thanks for asking. I didn't include it in the document, the high schools came out before the third through eighth grade, and the high schools were also very good, both on its own and compared to the state. And so those results came out already, those are Algebra I, English I, English II, Biology, and US History. So we did very well, we grew in all of them, except US History were flat, but we beat the state in every category, and every other large urban district in the state of Texas is behind us in the STAR increase. These STAR results are better than any other district in Texas if you look at increase from one year to the next.
Okay, and I see that you're adding a bunch of NES schools for next year. How do they get added? How is that decision, those decisions, how are those decisions made?
So back in February, we looked at the schools that are F-rated and low D-rated that were still not in NES. We had enough confidence in the middle-of-the-year NWA scores and in the quality of instruction. Keep in mind, my team and I, we go to schools all the time. By that point, I'd already gone to over 100 schools, walking around, checking it out, looking at the instruction, coaching principals. In any case, we added the F schools and the low D schools, which numbered around 24, I believe, at that time. We also opened it up to the remaining D schools, so the ones that scored 65 and above, D schools to volunteer if they wanted to. And in addition, it was originally 26 that were DNF, low DNF, and 19 volunteered, that's where we get 45.
Okay. And finally, there's been talk about teachers that are leaving or have left, and certifications, like how many certified instructors versus non-certified?
Yes, I can tell you that we focused this year on training everybody, and we focus on helping them with their effectiveness, not just getting a certification. And only effective teachers could get the scores that we had. But to answer your question directly, right now, the thing that we're focused on is recruiting teachers, recruiting teachers with the certification. At this moment in time, today, we're at 455 vacancies for next year. That's how many we have to hire between now and August 12th. Last year at this time, it was over 1,000, I think it's 1,036. That's the difference, and we think we're going to be able to get to zero vacancies by the start of the school year. If you ask the HR department and the principals and the division chiefs, they know that our priority is hiring certified teachers. At the same time, last year in the state of Texas, new teachers, 33% of all new teachers in the state of Texas that were hired last year were not certified. And the reason that is, is because there's a national teacher shortage. So we may face the same thing here, it'll be a last resort to hire an uncertified teacher, but I also, so that, we're going to err on the side of certified, of course, and I think we've been able to do that for the most part. But I also want to say, you know, there are a number of teachers without certification that can teach well. We're looking for effective teachers, and because of our rigorous evaluation system and our rigorous hiring system, they have to go through a performance interview. Because of that, we think we're going to get effective teachers, whether they're certified or not.
Councilmember Plummer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Superintendent for being here. A lot of my colleagues have already asked my questions. I do want to circle back just very quickly to the wraparound services. Can you explain one more time your sunrise centers? You mentioned that, so a sunrise center services approximately how many schools?
So there are seven sunrise centers.
Okay.
So they each serve about 40 schools. But it's not just, it's geographically based, so there may be more schools for this sunrise center and fewer schools for this sunrise center.
Okay, and those 40 schools do not have wraparound services within their schools? I just want to make sure I clarify.
That's correct. So now the wraparound services are one wraparound service person for every five or six schools, four to six schools, somewhere in that number? It depends, right? If it's an area of great need, there's more wraparound specialists, if an area of low need, there's fewer.
Okay, and as we know, children that don't eat well, that have struggles at home, struggling with mental health issues, depression, et cetera, nutritional issues, lack of being able to be clothed, would you be open to reconsidering the structure of your sunrise centers? What I hear oftentimes is that unfortunately, in some schools, the struggle, it's not possible for the mom, dad, grandma, granddad, auntie, uncle to get to the sunrise center to get what they need, and oftentimes, their immediate needs, uniforms, you know, not being able to wash your clothes to get to school, and there's an inability there of transportation inequities, et cetera, financial issues, not being able to, you know, parents not being able to miss work, et cetera. So you don't have to, you know, make a commitment now, but what I would ask of you is to reconsider how you look at the wraparound services at schools that are most need. I'd appreciate if you could put that into your formula.
So wraparound, the sunrise centers were not designed to replace the wraparound specialists. The sunrise centers was intended to be a force multiplier for the community services that are already in existence, not to replace those. So if you go to a sunrise center, I know some of you have, you will see that there are other organizations there that we can work synergistically with, and the sunrise centers are supposed to be a more comprehensive aid to the most needy students, and students with the biggest need and concerns, not just food, but employment, not just food or clothes, but health. And so the sunrise service centers serve those kids. The wraparound specialists, what they have done, the parents can still go to the school and still get food, because the wraparound specialists at the unit level will ensure those food banks are stocked, will ensure that the clothes banks are still stocked. And so a parent doesn't need to search for it, they don't need to go to a sunrise center, they need to go to their school. They'll know the office manager, they'll know the secretary, they'll know the principal, and they will be served that way.
Okay, so I think that's a little bit maybe of some miscommunication.
Sure.
That I think that we need to do, you know, to try to get out to kids, what we're hearing, or I'm hearing, and I think my colleagues are as well, is that the wraparound service person that was there before is no longer there, and so getting the access to those things, as mentioned, they're having to now go to the sunrise center. And so I feel like we need to be, if we can get a list of that, of who that contact is at all the schools, so that we can support our constituents in the proper manner.
Yeah, so there's no list for all the schools. The parent would go to the assistant principal or principal or office manager, whoever the principal says is the person who's going to pass out the food or pass out the clothes, or refer them to sunrise center or psychologist or nurse, that person will be up to the principal to do. So the parent, we make it easy on them, they just need to go to the school, talk to the school leadership or the office manager, and they will get their needs met.
But I'm saying, from an operational perspective, I don't think that's clear.
I agree.
And that's what I'm trying to say.
Councilmember, we're going to need to move on, because I know he's got a short amount of time here.
I understand what you're saying.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Chair, and thank you Superintendent Miles for coming in today, and I was going to ask the question with my colleague, ask about the wraparound services. I have approximately over 21 NSF schools in my district, District 2, and so of course, like my colleagues, I've received quite a few calls about concerns about the changes and things like that, and the wraparound services was one of them. But the other one from some of the teachers, students are missing out on field trips, that some of the teachers feel that will help the student, motivate the student, and I think they're not able to go on field trips because they interrupt instructions. And so I'm just wondering, are you planning on allowing students to start going back on field trips, from my understanding, sixth graders didn't get a chance to go to the museum, you know, and these are things that really help our kids in our community. And so that's one question. The other person, is there any plan to rebuild Key Middle School? And so, you know, Fleming and Key was kind of integrated, and so Key Middle School is an important school, I want to know if you're going to rebuild that, or going to build that. And then school choice, what is school choice, and what high schools are part of this particular, that particular program?
So your...
School choice, and tell us what schools are not.
Your very first question was about field trips.
Field trips, yeah.
So, yes, in fact, we have a document that we'll send out this year called For the Record, and so one of the topics we've already talked about for the record is field trips, because field trips are a great way for kids to grow in their experiences and their perspective. And if the non-NES schools have field trips, we want the NES schools to have field trips too. So we have a board regulation, policy and regulation around field trips, and so schools, including NES schools, can take field trips, they just have to follow the regulation, and so what they've always done. For example, if you want to go out of country, the regulation says you have to get approval from the superintendent. If you want to go out of state, you have to get approval from the executive director. So it's normal field trip procedures is the answer.
They have to get permission from you, right?
Only out of country.
Out of the country?
It's from, yeah.
The museum downtown?
No, no, that's up to the principal, that'll be fine.
Okay, okay.
The other question around choice, we have a great school choice program here, you can choose during the lottery, or the, not lottery, but school choice process, to sign up for any school that's not in your zone. And so I'm not sure which school you're referring to, but people can choose if there are enough seats in that school.
I mean, can I just...
You got to be really quick, because we got a lot of people in the queue, and his time is going down.
From my understanding, high schools are, are high schools part of school choice?
Yes, high schools are part of school choice. Yes, high schools are part of school choice.
Councilmember Huffman.
Thank you, Chairwoman. My first question is, you mentioned there were teachers hired without certifications, and is that for all Texas public schools, or is it public schools, private schools combined?
It's, it's just Texas public schools.
Okay.
And that information is, can be found on TEA's website.
Thanks. Second thing, you know, we saw the scores in the NES schools go up from the 2022, 2023 school year, you know, to the 2023, 2024 school year. So that indicates that something is, you know, teachers are doing something better, right? What was the teacher turnover from the 22, 23 school year of teachers to the 23, 24 school year? Do you know that?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we can get that number for you.
And additionally to that, if you had the numbers also from the turnover for this next school year, that'd be helpful, too. Thank you.
Okay.
And we can submit those questions. His staff did say, any questions that we didn't get answered today, we can submit those, and then we'll put those all out in one document. We'll move to Councilmember Carolyn Evans Shabazz.
Thank you, and thank you Superintendent. I did meet you at the Jack Yates High School when you first came on board, and I kind of lost my voice, but I'm going to try to get this done. First and foremost, again, thank you. And I know that the NES system yields high results, because it's based on rote memorization and skills, basically. And so that means that some of the students that need additional help may not be able to fare well in a NES system. And so I don't know what measures you have to retain these strides that have been achieved. That, that's my first question. And then, with the budget deficits, how do you plan to expand the NES system? And then I have a major question at the end, so if you could address those, I'd appreciate it.
The curriculum in NES is tied to amplify Eureka Carnegie, what we call high-quality instructional materials. It's not rote memorization, in fact, it's just the opposite. It talks about, we, we talk about conceptualization, we talk about application, we talk about story problems, not just computation. And so if you look at the curriculum closely, the, the reason why the kids did better, and mind you, this is one year, so I don't, I don't want to stake everything on one year of data. One year data does not make a trend, although we're starting to see a trend, because our middle-of-the-year scores and NWEA was strong. And next week, we'll report out to the board our end-of-year NWA scores, which are also strong, and shows the same pattern. But, going back to the curriculum, the reason why is that curriculum is at grade level with, and I don't want to use a lot of jargon, but with scaffolds, with supports, so that kids who are behind can actually understand it. And then it's differentiated, so the first hour is when they're, they're getting the instruction, direct instruction, high engagement. They take a mini test, a mini quiz, 10 minutes, and the kids who are ahead go to the team center, kids who are behind stay with the teacher, kids who are behind get more time with the expert, the teacher, kids who are ahead get challenged. So, how will we be able to sustain this, and how will we be able to prove? You know, my guess is that next year, we're going to be even stronger. We're adding some curricular supports, even more so for emergent bilingual students, better scaffolding, the curriculum has already proven itself, but it's going to be tweaked and made even stronger. We're adding more NES schools, you're going to see even stronger growth of our kids next year.
Just as a quick follow-up, well, I, I am a certified teacher, principal, counselor, diagnostician, all of that. So I kind of take issue with the lack of respect for education when you are hiring non-certified teachers. It just, you know, kind of rings to the fact that, well, you don't really have to have it, but you can still deal with our most cherished, cherished assets, our children. But my, my real question is, there's been a question since you got here as to whether you were here on a mission. And that mission would be to destroy public education, which means that we know that there's a great push at the state level to destroy public education. So what are your feelings about school choice and vouchers?
So I, I can't speak to anybody else, I can speak for myself. I've been in public education a long time, and my goal has always been to serve the underserved kids and to raise their achievement, close the achievement gap, and help them with their needs. And to hire good teachers, effective teachers, train them, coach the principals, so that we have a strong public education. The answer to your question is the following. With regard to school choice, I've been a fan of choice. I ran a charter network. I'm a little agnostic as to the type of school, I think every school should be a good school. Every school should be a good school. And with regard to vouchers or anything like that, I have one mission here. I was not asked to do vouchers, charters, closed schools, I was asked to get us out of intervention by taking the DNF schools and making them stronger, and keeping our AMB schools strong. That's all you can see from me. 274 schools, I don't have any other mission. If the law passes, we'll, we'll deal with that, but I have 274 schools, the weak ones, we're going to make stronger. And you can see those kids, you give those kids a chance, you bet on them, they're going to thrive. That's what we've been doing. I'm not betting on charters, private vouchers, I'm betting on the schools that we have, I'm betting on our kids that we have. Because that's been my experience in the last 30 years, serving only in underserved schools, that when you bet on kids, when you say they can, and you make them believe, and you give the teachers some supports, and you had the right system, they're going to thrive, and the kids are going to thrive, and they're going to get the results. Not for intervention, because they want to be able to read and have the skills for your 2035 environment. And in the process, we'll get out of intervention. That's my position on.
So what is a better way to destroy public education than destroy HISD?
Shabazz, we're going to move to the next council member, because he only has a few, a few more minutes left, so we're going to move. But any questions that do not get answered, we will submit those.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Flickinger.
Thank you. Did you apply for FEMA funding after the natural disaster that was just declared?
Yes, sir.
You talked about hospital scale pay, or how, what exactly is that? Is that merit pay? Is, how does that work?
The hospital model system is one where there's a range of salaries depending on the position. So for example, sixth grade reading teacher in a middle school gets paid the most, followed by math and science, followed by social studies, and followed by electives. That's a hospital model scale, it's an incentive pay scale, it's not a pay-for-performance model, it's incentive pay.
Turnover, I would like to see what the turnover statistics are and how they compare to the state. Also, are you doing exit interviews with the teachers that are leaving?
So, I believe the HR department is conducting exit interviews to the, when there's somebody who wants to provide an exit interview.
Okay. And with your non-certified teachers, do they get more classroom observation?
All of our teachers have on-the-job feedback, so not daily, but almost daily, whether they're certified or not certified.
Okay. And the spending, I was listening to an interview this morning, driving in, and they were saying that the spending at the NES, NES schools was significantly higher per student than it was in the non-NES schools. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So are you able, do you have the funding to be able to increase that spending at all the schools, when they all go to NES?
We had the fun, so we, we passed a budget with 130 NES schools, 130. We're able to sustain that, 130 schools. However, we will not, and somebody asked this question earlier, and I didn't answer it, just forgot, we're able to sustain 130 schools. We will not be able to expand the number of NES schools unless we get new revenue coming in.
Okay. And then last question, how many students went to Japan, and how many went to DC?
I believe the number is around 300, because it's only applied to the 20.
What was the question, Councilmember Flickinger? What was your question I didn't hear?
How many of the students got to go to the trip to Japan, and how many got to go to DC?
Yeah, and again, I think it's around 300, but if you submit that, we'll, we'll get an answer for you, an exact number. And then I think we had 400 or so go to DC, but let me get to you the exact number.
Okay, thank you very much.
The point is, there'll be a lot more next year, because the, the 28 NES schools, the original ones, I think there was only like eight middle schools.
Thank you.
Councilmember Davis, let's keep our questions succinct, because we are running out of time.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Superintendent for coming, accepting the invitation from the mayor and, and our council for coming out today. And just want to briefly ask of you, since, you know, we've had, as a student of Houston Public Education, in 30 years, we've had seven superintendents in the city of Houston. I wanted to focus on the fact that everything should be about the students and the teachers. So you just gave us a percentages of how the district of HISD, and this is in the articles of the paper, the state is struggling, HISD trends went up. So let me thank you also for accepting the request of the pastors, that when we came to you about our concerns, you accepted us. Now, is it true, or explain to council, that there is a program that HISD has offered to education students in college, HBCU, which is what Tech Southern is? Can you explain the program in terms of uplifting the teachers and the students? Can you explain that number as to what you offered HISD to those students last year, senior college grads going out in education?
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't have all the details, so I will, we'll get that to you. But we do have a couple programs where we are helping kids, especially kids who are predominantly underserved, to get into our highest, the, the nation's highest performing colleges, but also just to expand their college access. And so those are specific programs for, for students, for high school students. But the, I think the best thing we're doing to help all of our kids is to help raise our college career military readiness scores. And part of that has to do with academics, part of that has to do with career tech ed, and also part of it has to do with getting ready for a different type of environment. So we've, we've expanded four programs of study, I don't know if you're also talking about this, four programs of study at every high school, networking, logistics, health, and entrepreneurship. And those are provided at every high school, so that all of our kids get a better chance at internships and to enter the marketplace once they graduate from high school. The other thing we're starting is AI in, as an elective, AI in the workforce, an elective at every high school, so that kids can learn more about how to use AI in the workplace.
Superintendent Miles, I know you said you had to leave by 3 o'clock, it's 3:08. I do want to thank you for, you, you do want to take, we do have two more.
If two people have, or two urgent questions, let me take those, and then I got to go, but.
We got staff from Councilmember Cayman's office.
Thank you Superintendent Miles. I just have one question on behalf of Councilmember Cayman. You'd mentioned to Councilmember Flickinger that HIC has applied for FEMA assistance following the derecho storm. Sinclair Elementary in District C suffered severe damage as a result of that storm, so we wanted to clarify, has HISD submitted an application for FEMA assistance for the repairs needed specifically at Sinclair Elementary School?
So we, we've applied for FEMA assistance for all the damaged areas, including Sinclair, but we also have obviously applied for our insurance for Sinclair Elementary School. So we feel comfortable saying that Sinclair will be open next year, and we will, you know, we will apply our funding to get them ready.
And do you have a current status on that application? Have you heard back on the status?
I have not, but we, we may have.
We can get an answer on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you Superintendent Miles for, for coming out today. I think you've answered a lot of questions. I really have a comment more than a question. You know, you currently show 7,200 as a homeless count for HISD. The city of Houston shows 1,100. So, in essence, I've, I've, over the years, kind of studied this a bit, and you all are, first and foremost, you're educators, but secondly, you are in a large sense, de facto, social workers. So understanding the wraparound services and the sunrise centers and the needs there are great. What is the current number? Last count I had was like 245 of the total schools are Title I, is that still a?
That sounds about right, we can get you the exact number.
Okay, thank you.
Staff from Councilmember Castillo's office.
Thank you, Madam President. Quick question, you mentioned that the district has 48 wraparound specialists at the unit level. I will say, I know that we've talked a lot about that. For District H, those wraparound services can make or break a student's educational journey, so I just want to really highlight the importance of those. My question is, and I'll just ask the one most specifically, is has any of the recent storms shifted your priorities as it relates to the bond?
As it relates to the bond?
Mm-hmm.
No, mostly because we only had three schools with significant damage. All the other damages really focused on the air conditioning units and, you know, just what would normally be replaced anyway, something that we're going to go out, you know, hopefully the board will approve us going out for bond, mostly around air conditioning, safety, those sorts of things. So it hasn't changed much as a result of the, the storm.
We do have a council member that is online, I'm going to ask his questions, and if you can't answer him right now, we'll submit those with the list of questions. He, Councilmember Martinez wants to know, when evaluating staff, are they based on TEA criteria? With NES model being new to HISD, will there be an opportunity for feedback and input through a survey? And also, has there been a decline in enrollment? What are the plans to increase enrollment?
So the teacher evaluation is, is aligned with what's called T tests, which is a state evaluation. It's different in that we can make it a little bit more rigorous, we can change some of the categories, but it's T test-based. The principal evaluation is not tied to the state evaluation, is an HISD-specific evaluation. That was the first question. The, the second question, ma'am, was?
Has there been a decline in enrollment, and what are the plans to increase enrollment?
There was a decline in enrollment for the 23, 24 school year, we're anticipating a slight decline for next year. The plans on, on getting enrollment up, and you all know that, we sit in a context where enrollment in every large urban district has declined, and in the state of Texas has declined. There's lots of reasons for that. Part of it demographic, most of it has to do with public education not performing like it should. And so if you look at HISD's decline in enrollment over six years, so it preceded me, 30,000 kids, the enrollment, the loss of enrollment came mostly from the underserved schools, the DNF schools, not the AMB schools. Everybody has lost some enrollment, but mostly, predominantly rather, in the DNF schools. So how are we going to turn that around? We're going to turn that around by getting our achievement up, by getting our discipline under control in those schools, by adding programs like the DIAD and travel, and getting people back into our schools and, and having us compete with the charter schools that's taking many of our kids.
And then we will, any other questions from council members that you still have, we will submit those to the superintendent, and we will put out a comprehensive list of all the questions from the council members, and we will put that in a newsletter. And we will end our questioning with Mayor Whitmire, if you wanted to make a comment to the superintendent and the council members in the committee meeting today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions. I want to thank the superintendent for making himself available. I think the key going forward is going to be I think the key going forward is going to be communication, communication, and even more communication. Thank the members for having a very substantive dialogue. Councilmember Pollard and Plummer. There's everyone signed the letter inviting you. And I think that's indicative of our concern and our recognition for how HISD goes is how the city of Houston is going to go. So I hope we realize we're all in this together. There'll be some tough decisions that you'll have to make. But I hope you'll listen to our constituents as we do and come before us when you want to communicate. Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope the committee members see this value of having really substantive committee meetings where we have the opportunity. I know the public's going to come forward in a moment. So thank you. We look forward to working with you going forward, and good luck.
And we hope this won't be the last time that we'll have you at our Economic Development Committee meeting because I will tell you that we have a list of questions that we'll be submitting to your office that we didn't have an opportunity to discuss today. But I think that we'll get those answers, and we'll push those out to the members of the public. And again, we thank you for coming and making this hour available to us. And we look forward to engaging more in the future. Thank you, Superintendent Miles, for being here.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor.
If you are a member of the...